Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September fourteenth meeting of the Saugatuck City Council to order. Kirk, would you please take the role?
Becken?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Leo? Leo? Lewis?
Up here.
Peterson?
Here.
Truster?
Here.
Verplank?
Here.
Leo? I know I saw her.
We got the video, but not the audio.
Yeah, looks like she's there.
Okay.
Holly?
We can see you, but we can't hear you.
Yeah, she chatted to everybody. My mic is on. Says right there in the chat.
Okay, well, of course, we'll count you present, but I hope we can fix the sound as time goes on. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
I move that we approve the regular city council meeting of August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, as presented.
Mr. Mayor?
Jane?
I'll second.
Move by Peterson, second by Verplank, to approve the minutes. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Leo?
Holly, just raise your hand and we'll count you as a yes.
Okay, Johnson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
You know, you might try, Holly, is close out of the meeting and come back in. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I was looking for Holly. Did she close out?
I don't see her now.
There she is.
She is. She's connected. It says connecting to audio now.
Okay, I think we have you. Holly, you want to try out your audio?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, a couple of mayor's comments. There've been a lot, a large number of social media inquiries and posts regarding the status of the non-motorized trail. And we've received information from the Blue Star Trail people that they're working on portions of the trail to the south, but it wasn't clear what the status was of our portion of the trail in Saugatuck, Douglas, and Saugatuck Township. So I'd like to propose reactivating the tri-community group that we, planning group that we had before, which met once last February, but not since. The group was charged with completing work by July first, and therefore I think the group's charter has expired and needs to be renewed. I want to put this on the agenda for our next regular meeting to get that group reconstituted and to begin again to move forward with the planning for the our portion of the trail. Secondly, one of our residents, Carol Bruckman, sent us a very eloquent letter, I thought, urging us to act on mitigating the milfoil duckweed mess that we have in the harbor. Each year for the past two years, we've pledged to work on the problem over the winter so we'd be ready to address the infestation before the next voting season. The Bruckman's letter didn't make it into our agenda packet, but I think you all received it, and I urge you to read it carefully. And I propose putting this issue on the agenda for our next workshop so we can continue moving forward with that as well. Just as an update, we looked today at the county health department's report on COVID, and it shows that there are fifteen cases in Saugatuck and nine cases that have been identified in Douglas. So the numbers have been holding fairly steady, and that's a good thing, and I think it's a sign that all the measures that our business community and everyone else have put into effect are working. The cases that, possible cases that might have been infected during the Labor Day weekend will probably not show up yet for another couple of weeks, but if we're holding this trend that we have now, it's pretty encouraging. With that, are there city manager comments?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any proposals for agenda changes? Hearing none, we'll move to our guest speaker section, the city attorney discussion. Kirk, you want to introduce this?
Yes, the city council instructed the city manager to contact the city attorney regarding the two letters that were submitted by council member Peterson and council member Verplank. Those communications were sent to the city attorney, and I scheduled him to attend the meeting tonight to have a conversation with city council.
Great. Jeff, are you here?
Yes, sir, I am. Can you hear me?
We are, okay. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. First off, good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody, albeit virtually. Kirk was kind enough to send me not only the letters that he referred to, but also a clip from what I believe was your last meeting where this was discussed. My understanding, based on that clip and the letters, was that there are really two areas where the council's asking for perhaps either affirmation of prior discussions we've had or clarification perhaps of two questions. The first question being, is there a duty to vote? When you know, when you know the person who's before the city council, you may be friends or enemies, I suppose, with the person. Can you, should you vote under those circumstances, or do you have a duty to abstain? We're going to look at a couple of different things in terms of answering that question. The first is the charter. Section four point one eight of the charter, I think, is relatively clear. It says, and I'm quoting in part, "Each member of the council who is recorded as present at any meeting shall be required to vote on all questions decided by the council unless excused by four members of the council, or in a case where the matter personally affects the member not voting." And then, in fact, it goes on to say that unless you are excused or you have a conflict, you, it's a violation of the charter not to vote. That's consistent with rules of procedure that this council adopted in two thousand and eighteen, which indicates on page six in the duty, in the voting section, that there's an affirmative duty for council members to vote unless prohibited by a conflict. And then in turn, it refers to two other sections of the charter in, to define basically what that means by a conflict. And in both cases, it's consistent with both state law and the charter provision I mentioned earlier. Conflict for these purposes means a financial conflict. So in other words, I, I'm going to gain, I'm going to personally gain or suffer financially by this vote, or if it's a matter involving a city contract. So in other words, I have a business, that business is contracting with the city, obviously, in that circumstance, and it's really just a variation of the first conflict. I cannot vote on that contract. Those are the only times under the rules of procedure identified as reasons when you would not have an obligation to vote. And again, that's consistent as well with an attorney general opinion that I think we've discussed, or at least some of us have discussed in the past, which stands for the proposition that there is, that public officials have an affirmative duty to vote absent conflict, and then in fact, it's a breach of your oath of office not to vote under those circumstances. So if, in fact, a conflict is either a direct financial benefit or detriment, or if a person is unable to, if they have a contract, or it involves their own conduct, those would be circumstances where it would be appropriate not to vote, and in fact, you shouldn't vote in those cases. Otherwise, in my opinion, you have an affirmative duty to vote, and I think, again, consistent, that's consistent with both the charter, this council's rules of procedure, as well as the AG opinion I mentioned before. So that's the first issue that I think was put to me. I'll be glad to take a break, or I can just move on to the second.
Are there any questions for Jeff? Why don't you proceed, Jeff?
I haven't put everybody to sleep yet. I'm a little disappointed.
Not so far.
Okay. Give me another chance. So then the second question, as I understood it, was, and I get this more from the YouTube clip that I saw, which is if the, if a majority of the council wants to express its displeasure with a statement made, implication made, et cetera, by another council member during a council meeting, can they do so? I think it's, first, it's important to emphasize that all council members as legislative, as members of the legislative body, have a great deal of legal immunity in terms of what they say during deliberations of the governing body. It would be an extraordinary situation for someone to be legally liable for saying something during a meeting of the city council. That's just the legal landscape. That does not mean, however, that the city councils, without any tools, if it chooses to, to express its displeasure, as I said before. As the city is aware, because we've done it once, that I can recall in the past, there is what's called a motion to censure, which essentially is just that, it would be a motion, a resolution typically adopted by the city council, expressing its displeasure, expressing it's the basis for that displeasure, and making that a matter of public record. Another alternative would be, although you don't see this often, I think in some ways it's a more, it's a more positive ass way to handle a situation like this, and I'm not advocating, I'm just saying this is an alternative, would be to have the council, if it were inclined, adopt, again, a resolution or motion affirmatively supporting, in this case, what I understand was a vote taken by another council member. So in other words, we're supportive of, you know, I think it was council member Verplank. We support her right to vote. She did, she, her vote was consistent with the charter, as it's been explained to us, with state laws, it's been explained to us, with our rules of procedure, and we don't find any conflict or any evidence of impropriety or anything like that. That would, that would be another way, in my opinion, of handling the situation that doesn't evolve or devolve into a motion to censure. Then the third alternative, and these are not exclusive, they could be done essentially jointly if that was the druthers of the council. The third option would be you have adopted, back in two thousand, you being the council, adopted an ethical statement in two thousand and four. There is a, that ethical statement includes provisions for the need to be, to act with integrity with respect to one another, the need to act in fairness with one another, et cetera, et cetera. There is a provision under that ethical statement for members of the public or other council members to file a formal complaint if they believe that provisions of the ethical statement have been violated, and then there is a review process set out in that ethical statement. So in my opinion, that would be another option if the council were so inclined. Last thing I'd say is I, I'm certainly aware that the council does not want to spend a lot of time on this. I've gone out of my way to try to keep this as thirty thousand feet as possible in terms of my comments. If the council wants something more detailed, I can certainly provide that. But my understanding was you didn't, you really didn't want to go that far at this point, which is perfectly fine.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there questions of Jeff or comments? Chris? And Barry?
Thank you, Jeff. I think I would like to attempt an emotion about this. I know that there's some emphasis to tie the two together, so let me give it a shot. I move to direct the city attorney to prepare for council review, a resolution disagreeing with council member Leo's previous statement regarding the city clerk and a council member, and affirming that is council member's duty to vote unless there is a conflict as stated in our charter and law, and affirming that council members that did vote were, their votes were appropriate as they had no conflicts.
Is there a second to that motion? Barry?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Peterson, second by Johnson. We don't have, I don't have the motion written out, but if anybody wants it to be clarified, I'm sure Chris could read it again. Hearing, excuse me, Barry?
Yeah, could she please read it again?
I move to direct the city attorney. We move to direct the city attorney to prepare for council's review, a resolution disagreeing with council member Leo's previous statements regarding the city clerk and an election and a council member, and affirming that it is a council member's duty to vote unless there is a conflict as stated in our charter and law, and affirming that council members that did vote were appropriate as they had no conflicts or other improprieties.
Thanks. Discussion?
Ken?
Yeah, Mark?
Mark here. Yeah, Mark here, can you hear me?
Yes.
The term doesn't say censure. What, what, the part, it was a long, Chris, excuse me, it was a long, long motion. I'd like to hear it again, to be honest with you. They're just, I just don't know what we're trying to get, get to on this. I mean, censure is one thing, but that's not included in the motion.
Chris, would you mind reading it again?
So.
No, I would like to say one thing, though. Censure is not what I, I had ever talked about. It was getting on the record that the two, the comments that were made about the city clerk and our election commissioner were inappropriate. There are others that could have filed a complaint about violation of our city, of our code of conduct. I could have asked for censure. I simply wanted a recognition, even an apology or proof, when these things were said about two women and their integrity in the community. So let me read it again. Move to direct the city attorney to prepare for council's review, a resolution disagreeing with council member Leo's previous statement regarding the city clerk and a council member. That's the first one. And affirming that it is a council member's duty to vote unless there is a conflict as stated in our charter and law. And then the third part is, and affirming that council members that did vote, it was appropriate as they had no conflict or other improprieties.
So we need the attorney to get involved to vote on that motion, in your opinion?
I want to, I want to vote. I do.
No, but do you want the attorney to write it up? Can we not just move on your motion?
That'd be fine with me.
I mean, I'm just questioning the need to get the attorney involved and expend additional financial resources.
That works for me.
Jeff, is there any reason not to do that, or to?
Perfectly fine.
Okay, Barry?
I second it. I think that's, I would move ahead that way.
So you would strike the words of?
Move, it would be move to prepare for council's review, a resolution disagreeing, or do we want it? Yeah. Remove, remove city attorney.
Actually, we can vote on it right now. Yeah, you're making a resolution as you speak.
Perfect.
Okay.
If I may, yep. I'm, I'm just tickled to see that we see that this is the most important thing that we need to be dealing with as a council. So it's just ridiculous, but you know, thanks for trying. That's my comments. It's ridiculous.
Maybe if it'd been your reputation, somebody was talking about it, wouldn't seem quite so ridiculous.
It's time to grow a thick skin game.
This isn't a thick skin.
Mr. Mayor, let's keep this on track.
Any other discussion? I am not hearing or seeing anyone wishing to make a comment here. One more time, anybody wish to comment? Hearing none, then let's take a roll call vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Leo?
Oh.
Lewis?
No.
Truster?
Yes.
Verplank?
On the record.
Oh, I'm glad you think this is funny. Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. And thank you, Jeff, for your presentation. Appreciate your being with us. The next item on the agenda is public comment on agenda items only. If you wish to make a comment, please unmute yourself and speak your name to be recognized, or press star six if you're calling in by phone to unmute, unmute your phone to speak.
Lauren Flanagan.
Mr. Mayor?
Lauren Flanagan.
Scott Dean.
Scott Dean. Lauren Flanagan.
Lauren Flanagan.
Mark LaShay.
LaShay, okay.
Angela Karian.
Todd Hoskins.
Okay, Mark? All right, I think I missed writing down one person. Scott Dean was first. LaShay, I think, was third, and somebody else is in the middle there. Pardon me for, oh, Flanagan.
Lauren Flanagan.
Okay, first Scott Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Scott Dean. Live at five forty-four St. Joseph Street here in Saugatuck. Many of you know I'm running for city council, but this, my comments are as a citizen. This is the second time that I've seen city councils use city resources to to deal with something like this. Back in April, a member of city government attended a rally in Lansing, Michigan, protesting the governor's lockdown. That person was exercising their First Amendment rights. And the council wisely dropped the matter, although it did involve a lawyer and waste a lot of taxpayers' time on the matter. Now we have another situation where somebody on council didn't like what another council member said, even though that council member exercised his First Amendment rights. But, once again, a large amount of city resources and our tax dollars has been used for these petty, petty disputes among members of the council. And frankly, I think that the citizens do not want to see this. I think there are too many issues right now with businesses suffering due to COVID, high water levels, unsafe roads, and the list goes on. Yet the council has spent roughly twenty minutes of this meeting trying to settle an issue of free speech. Frankly, I find it tiring, and I would urge the council to drop this matter like a hot potato.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Lauren Flanagan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, one of the reasons you called in the city attorney was to comment on my prior comment, which Jane Verblank, Verplank mentioned in the last meeting, which I wasn't unable to attend, that I thought it was proper board governance to recuse yourself from a vote if there was any appearance of a conflict. I recognize the law says financial conflict is the primary consideration, however, on an ethical, moral, generally accepted, good board governance basis, which is something I teach, and I'm on a number of boards, and have advised hundreds of boards around the world. If there's ever a question that someone, because of their relationship, might have a potential conflict, that doesn't mean it's an actual conflict, but a potential conflict because of a friendship or the opposite, they're enemies, they should recuse themselves from a decision about hiring. And so that was where I came from. Now, the fact that this Jane then presented this at the last meeting as a quote "election issue", my question is, if this is something that the incumbents running for reelection are raising, is the fees for the city attorney, should they be paid by those incumbents running for election or by the city? So I just feel like this whole thing is electioneering, and the reason that I'm so upset with these city council and the members running is not because they're old white men, as you said, in Ken Tester, which, you know, I seem to have rent-free space in your brain. It's about the fact that you're not focusing on the key issues of this community. We have, with our flag thing, you know, umpteen discussions about Robert's rules. Now, when raised that there's a question there might be a conflict of interest, we have to bring in the city attorney at taxpayer expense to make a rule, which Christine has just done a vindictive vote to try to penalize Holly Leo. And this is the politicization that's happened in this community, which is so deadly. And that's what I'm upset about. It's not personal. It's not men versus women. It's not whatever. It is, we need to focus on solving the problems of Saugatuck, which are numerous and many, and of all the things that we could be talking about, that we have taken the first, you know, this many minutes of this meeting, and I don't know how many instances, I'd like to know, what did it cost to get the city attorney to rule on this? This is ridiculous.
Next would be, a second. I believe, LaShay. Mark, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark LaShay, three, four, five Grand Street. I've been a resident for nine years. I prepared some comments, and the first part is superfluous, given the city attorney's discussion and then the, the motion. But what I'd like to say is, I served fourteen years on a city commission in suburban Detroit, a community of twenty-five hundred people. And so I have some basis, before moving here nine years ago full-time, I have some basis for the, the how things work and how things should work. And I want to say, in my opinion, the referral of this matter to a city attorney is a blatant waste of taxpayer dollars, my taxpayer dollars. It's also a waste of the council's time, as other people have said, and it is a waste of the time of the city attorneys. I think he did a fine job. I understand, I'm sure he wants to keep the contract for this city, and I think he did a fine job of threading that needle and keeping certain people happy. The matter can only be reviewed as harassment. It's an effort at intimidation by one or more city council members against another. They can claim that, oh, my gosh, my reputation was impugned. Well, grow the frick up. I fully remember, moreover, similar tactics being used previously against another city council member, resulting in her untimely resignation and her even selling her business and moving from town. This smacks amazingly similar to that intimidation as it's happening now against council member Leo. I respectfully ask the entire city, Saugatuck City Council, to act like adults, take such slights directly and privately to those who supposedly made them, grow a little thicker skin, as somebody else mentioned, and start to act in the best interest of the entire city instead of themselves. Rest assured, the people in this town are watching and paying attention, and will be voting on November third. Thank you.
Next speaker is Angela Karian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Mr. LaShay, I had some comments prepared before the attorney spoke and before the motion for a resolution. I'm really disappointed that we're spending the time on this. I very much agree with those who think this is a misuse of taxpayers' money, our money. My shoes are still wet from squeegeeing my basement. Here we are, and we have two new people in two very key positions in a very key election year. I wish we were talking about things that were more important than this. I very much agree that we're always, we're all going to hear things about ourselves that maybe we don't want to hear. Someone shouldn't be penalized for questioning the status quo. That's all I have to say.
Right, next in line would be Todd Hoskins. Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd Hoskins, resident of Saugatuck. In my business consulting, I work with businesses who have interpersonal issues. And one of the things that I talk about is, if you have employees who go to HR when there's a disagreement, you have a problem. And it feels like the interpersonal nature And it feels like the interpersonal nature of what has surfaced here, clearly, there was no legal issue, and we brought in a lawyer. The interpersonal nature points to the fact that we have a problem and there's dysfunction. And if somebody has a problem with somebody, what somebody else is saying, and there is no law being broken, I would ask that this council and councils moving forward have the relationality and the commitment to having conversations with each other to clear what is not right, so we're not paying lawyers and we're not using up time and minutes during a city council meeting and a city council workshop.
Thanks, Todd. Then next on my list was Gordon, and I don't have your last name, Gordon, and could you identify yourself and tell us where you reside?
Yes, hello?
Yes.
I think I'm Neil LaFort, and I just want to, I reside in Sagatuck, I think. All the council members are quite a... I just wanted to say, in terms of this, it's a very difficult issue. And I just, I have sent emails to you and the council today and yesterday, which basically said, you know, don't do this. This has no real basis. I think it's a waste of the council's time. And the issue that I would have in front of the lawyer to ask is, it's obvious. And I'm just stating, I think, what I've observed, that this is a very divided council, and the numbers add up to a situation of four to two. That's the reality. Say if I'm wrong, that's okay. But how is a approval of a resolution? How is the setting of an agenda? How is voting, as you've done, how is that within the due process or the fairness that people should be allowed? It's not, because there's no chance of the four that are pushing these agendas are going to lose any vote. I personally would rather see the council, if you're going to ignore my emails that I've said on this issue, not ignore my emails, as you did, on Park Street. And I'm still waiting to hear on Park Street, it's two months since this survey or this relook at the prior study has taken. And for $3,500, I can't believe we're still waiting for the engineer's approval. That would take maybe two hours of the engineer's time at that cost. I think this is an issue, it's not an election issue, but it's an issue that the people would probably like to hear about, what the council's intentions are prior to voting. So I just ask that you please get on with that. And let's hear what's going to be done about important areas in the city. And, you know, I understand people have personal feelings in all of this, but that's not what I think the people in Sagatuck want to hear when they call into these meetings. So that's all I have to say.
All right, there are two others who have raised their hands so far. Let me see here. Okay, Vicki Cobb.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Just a quick comment. I'm disappointed with the vote that was just taken. I'm disappointed for a couple of reasons. I do think it's a waste of time, given all the important issues that should be addressed by this council. But I also find it quite hypocritical that Councilwoman Peterson was the one to raise this issue. Roughly a year ago, it was Councilwoman Peterson who impugned the name of Nico Leo, putting words in his mouth that he never spoke at a city council meeting. And when she found out he never said those words, I never heard an apology come from her. So I think it's pretty surprising tonight to hear her anger and her frustration, when in fact, that is exactly what she did last year, and there were no consequences to that, and there was no apology, which is one of the comments she made tonight. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
The last raised hand I see is Dan Fox.
Good evening, all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I agree with a lot of what's been said, in terms of the amount of comment and so on and so forth, that arguably is time not particularly well spent. But honestly, I'd like to go back to the very beginnings of this. I agree with something Todd Hoskins said, which may surprise Todd, if not others, that if you get to the level of visiting human resources for counseling within an organization, things have probably gone pretty well awry up to that point. And I agree, I completely agree with that. And I think the antidote to that is fairly straightforward, fairly simple, and too often very difficult for someone to do, to actually engage in. And that, in any of those cases, that is a, is a simple apology between two people. I questioned your integrity. I should not have done that. I questioned and impugned, or seemed to impugn, the city clerk's integrity. That's a bridge too far. I should not have done that. I'm sorry I did that, and I'm sorry if anybody interpreted it that way. Had those apologies, simple apologetic neighborly, this is Sagatuck, we're neighbors. Had those sorts of comments been made early on, none of this, talk about a waste of time, none of this would have happened. No attorney, no, you know, enduring each other's wrath on public comment, wouldn't have happened. Just apologize. When you're wrong, just apologize. God knows, I've got gobs of experience being wrong, probably not as much experience apologizing, but some. An apology, that's all it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised. Anybody else wish to make a comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move to approval of accounts payable. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to, I moved to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $569,515.68.
Gary? Gary?
I think.
I second it, Mayor.
I'm sorry. I second that. And note that $546,000 plus dollars are taxed, passed through.
Duly noted.
Mr. Mayor, Holly Leo seconded the motion.
I'm sorry, Holly.
That's fine. That's fine by me.
Okay, Holly, I'll record Leo as a second. Move Leo seconded to approve accounts payable. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a voice vote.
Well, wait a second. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. I'm slow on the uptake. I did, I did have a question about the billing to the attorney on the 13th of August and then on the 17th of August regarding a FOIA request from True the Vote. Can we get some clarification on what that was about and why an organization would submit such a FOIA to us in the first place? Thank you.
Question.
Kirk?
Yeah, I'm happy to respond. In terms of why the organization submitted a FOIA to the city, you'd have to contact them. I have no idea why. It was sent out to, I think, nationwide. I think every clerk in Allen County got one, is my understanding. Cindy Osmond was our interim city clerk. This was a very extensive FOIA, so she contacted the city attorney to ask how to proceed, and he helped her with that process. We submitted a response with an estimate to supply the information, and then the organization declined and withdrew the request.
Satisfactory answer, Kirk?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Aaron, would you take the role, please?
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Prester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no introductions or ordinances, no public hearings, no unfinished business, so we move to new business. And the first item on that agenda is the City Hall computer service replacement. Kirk?
Yes, this item is a, an item that the council appropriated funds for in this year's budget. The City Hall server is scheduled for replacement this year. Shoreline Computer Systems or Shoreline Technology Solutions is the firm that we use as our IT department, and we quoted out a cost for the server replacement. We did verify their bid in terms of what it would cost if we went out and got another firm to do that. It's a little bit complex, because they're, they're doing our IT services already. If we were to go out and hire a different firm to do it, the pricing is the same, it's really the labor. So we contacted the Sagatuck Township. They just had a server replacement out there, and prices were comparable. So the pricing itself, or the staff were comfortable that it's in line with other organizations. And without a good server, I mean, that's what we're running everything on at City Hall with, so it's, it's past its due date, and we budgeted for it for this year, and we'd like to get it replaced, so we don't have any glitches or any downtime.
Very well. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn. Motion to approve quote number 000190V1 from Shoreline Technology Solutions as presented in the amount of $12,686 to replace the computer server and operating software at City Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
Barry Sandlin up first. Moved by Lewis, seconded by Johnson to approve this. Any discussion?
I have a question, Ken.
Mark?
Yeah, Kirk. In lieu of getting a written estimate in our competitive bid process, would this kind of fall in the area of professional services contract in your, in your mind?
Well, and that's, when I talked to the city attorney about this, I raised that exact same question, because if we bid, it's sort, our IT services are professional services, yet we're purchasing equipment. So if we put this out for bid, and, and in the, you know, we saved $100 on a server tower, our IT company still has to install all this stuff. So it's, that's where I, I talked to Mr. Sluggett. He said that this was appropriate to do it this way. If we, again, if we go out for bid on the items, the firm has to install it. So, but that's why what we did is we contacted some other places that just had the, their servers and their computer equipment replaced, to make sure that what we were being quoted was in line with other organizations, and we found that it was. So we wanted to double check to make sure that the, that the quote that we were getting that wasn't excessive, or, or at least it wasn't in line with other, other organizations, that the taxpayers of Sagatuck weren't paying too much. What we found is that we went online and even searched the, the individual items in there, and they all came back consistent with what they're bidding for. So obviously, the bulk of the work, the items are the items. They cost what they cost. It's just the, having the firm come in, the professional services, so to speak, come in and put everything together. We wouldn't want to have an outside firm configure your network and then have an IT, another IT department has to come in and try to figure out what they did and operate it. So they're sort of the architect and the construction.
Okay, I mean, for transparency, transparency reasons, I just wanted to, you know, get a little more in-depth explanation, and the fact that you consulted our attorney, I, I'm good. I appreciate it. Thanks for the extra information.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have a question, Mayor. I'd like to know, how long has Shoreline Technology been our IT provider?
Probably for, I would say, at least probably 13 years.
Okay. Do we bid out our IT work from time to time?
We have not, but you very well could, if you'd like.
Any other discussion? Then this is a roll call vote. Aaron, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Lewis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Prester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is the reappointment of individuals to various city boards and commissions. This, we're proposing to appoint Jim Muir to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring July 1st, 2023, Steve Mans to the Planning Commission with term expiring July 1st, 2023, and Daniel Panazzo to the Historic District Commission with a term expiring August 1st, 2023. These are mayoral appointments that are, need to be ratified by the council. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Garnett. Motion to approve the mayor's reappointments as presented.
Second.
Moved by Lewis, seconded by Leo to approve those appointments. Discussion? Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just so great to see people step up and give us their service on our boards. I've met Jim Muir, Steve Mans, maybe, but I know Dan Panazzo, and he is a stand-up guy, trustworthy, loyal. I'm glad to see he's giving us some more of his time.
Thanks. I was very impressed with all three of these, and I've known Jim for a number of years. He's a great guy, but yeah, Daniel really impressed us in his interview, so I'm glad he stepped up. Any other discussion? Then this too is a roll call vote. Aaron, would you call the roll, please?
Yep. Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Prester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Appointments are approved. Next is the employment agreement. Mrs. Holman to, Ms. Holman to be our interim city manager. What I, Karen is here with us tonight, so we welcome you to our meeting. And so what I would like to do is entertain a motion and then give council opportunity to ask questions or make comments about this, and I'm sure Karen would be happy to enter that discussion as well. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the employment agreement between City of Sagatuck and Mrs. Karen Doyle-Holman as presented.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got there, Chris was battling for attention, but that's okay.
I'll second it.
Wait, are you second? Okay. Moved by Verplank, seconded by Peterson to approve this employment, employment agreement. First of all, Karen, I wonder if you'd care to make a bit of a comment here, introducing yourself?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
Yes.
This is actually my first formal Zoom meeting. I've done it with friends, but not as a meeting. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I really appreciate you putting your faith in me, and this has been a very fast week. And I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to meeting you, working with you, getting the business of the city done timely and well. It's going to be a bit of a learning curve, learning how to do this in a COVID world remotely. Speaking of remotely, I did want to let you know that I do plan on working in the office. I'm sure there will be sometimes being remote, but I need to get a feel for who everyone is and what they're about, so I need to be there in person. Did you want me to go through my bio or anything like that?
Well, we've had it as background information, and talked about this at our workshop. Let me just turn it over to members of the council to... Let me just turn it over to members of the council to see if they have any questions or want you to elaborate on parts of your background.
Okay.
Council? Chris?
When do you start? No, I read your, your resume and it's, it's wonderful. It looks like it's going to hit all the points that we need going forward, especially through the election and, and winter. So thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I will start tomorrow.
Great. Anyone else? Well, okay. So we'll vote on the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you vote, I did want to let you know that I do have one prior commitment. And that is September 24th and 25th, which is a Thursday and Friday of next week. I, I will be out of town. So I wanted you to, to know that before you voted.
Okay. I'm sure that's not, that's not an issue. Certainly isn't with me. Let me call the vote unless there are any other questions. Aaron?
Verplank?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Becken?
Welcome, Karen. Yes.
Thank you.
Johnson?
Yes, welcome.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. And, and welcome, Karen. We're glad to have you. And I look forward to meeting you as soon as, as soon as we can arrange that. I mean, meeting in person.
Same here.
Motion carries, Mr. Mayor.
What was that?
I just said motion carries.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Aaron. I didn't catch that. There was no consent agenda, so we'll move to public comments on any issue. If you wish to make a comment, unmute yourself and tell us your name. Or if you're calling in by phone, it's star nine to unmute. And during, before your comment, tell us your name and where you reside. And limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone wish to make a comment?
Hi, this is Dan Panazzo.
Dan? Yes, go ahead.
Yes. Hey, Ken. Hey, I'd just like to say thank you. Thanks for the kind words and looking forward to working with the Historical Commission.
Good. Well, welcome you, welcome to the commission. I hope you enjoy your, your service there. Many of us have.
Great, great. Thanks a lot.
Anyone else wish to make a comment?
Hi, this is Brett.
Brett?
Yeah, Ed Field, the Sheriff's Office. Yeah, I got skipped over in the comments there. I didn't know if you wanted to get with me now or have later on in the.
No, why, why don't we take him out? You weren't on the agenda and I apologize for that.
Yep. Yeah, no big deal. Nope, I get it.
For, 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 uh, this is Lieutenant Brett Enfield, who is in charge of our policing in Sagatuck.
Yep. Um, school started. We had both officers in the schools and we haven't had any issues and it's been going smooth. And obviously it, they're glad to be back in the schools. Over the holiday weekend, last week about two o'clock in the morning, one of the deputies stopped a vehicle in downtown for suspected drunk driving. Through that traffic stop, the sole occupant possessed a substance believed to be cocaine. And also he had a nine millimeter handgun and assault rifle. And reference to graffiti complaints. Over the last few weeks, we've had several instances of graffiti reported. Deputies worked on that and also they worked with the shop owners in town to obtain some video. Through that video, we identified a possible suspect vehicle. The deputies worked on, for several days, trying to cultivate a suspect. And were able to cultivate a suspect through that video. And that led to a, to describe vehicle later being stopped and arrest made on that suspect. Right now, we have approximately over $2,000 worth of damages from the city and private individuals. And because of the way the graffiti laws and MDLP works, we were able to charge that as a felony. And we just wanted to say thanks to all the business owners that have surveillance cameras and they also shared that video with us, just, you know, to help out the community and stuff. And those, those type of things really do help, you know, with these type of crimes. So, and that's about it. I have for the report.
Okay, Brett, there's been a lot of social media discussion about stolen campaign signs. Do you have any comment about that?
Um, yeah, we, we have taken several complaints with that. We do not have any suspects at this time, but again, you know, a lot of those areas up there, people have, you know, home surveillance cameras and other things. If, you know, they have surveillance videos of any suspects or anything, you know, obviously please share that with us. And, you know, obviously we can try to get to the bottom of it.
Great. Okay. Anybody have questions of, of? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to make a comment? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move to communications. Let me get caught up here. Kirk, any comment on the harbor update piece?
I do not have any. I just forward that to City Council. That was the grant that the council participated in with the neighboring jurisdictions. So I wanted to make sure you had an update. I received that via an email.
Right. Okay.
Ben, can we ask question on that?
Yes.
Maybe Kirk can clarify. Is it, this is the project that the Outdoor Discovery Center is working out, correct? Working on?
No, this was, this was the project that Mr. Peterson went to the County Board of Commissioners and got them to move forward with it as long as the other jurisdictions contribute equally.
So what are we going to do with the money? What's it for?
Survey of the lake and sampling.
So this is going back to the harbor authority then to, to come up with some, is that?
Yeah, it, I don't think it.
I guess it's, we can look at that at the workshop. I just thought maybe this was part of the, you know, the waterways, towns and river waterway project, but it's.
The intent of the grant was to sample the sediments to determine, there was some, there was some thought that it might not be as contaminated as maybe people thought it was. And so they wanted to go out and do these samplings to determine that. And if that's the case, it might open the door that you could possibly do dredging and not have to dispose of the material in a off-site disposal center. I think that was kind of the, that was kind of the, the thought process behind it.
So it'll be entrusting these funds or at least not funds, but.
Mark, Mark, we can.
Go back to the harbor authority to work on, Ken? Is that what you think the plan?
I don't, I don't know if it's going to go back to the harbor. I'm not sure what the harbor authority would do with it. But, um, it'll get distributed back to the, it was more of kind of a, the way I understood, it was more kind of a public service message that people were saying that the harbor is contaminated and there was fears of the, the sediment and whatnot. And this was going to prove that it's not as bad as maybe people thought it was.
Certainly that most of the, any contaminants in the, in the bottomlands there are, are capped. They're under, you know, they're not on the surface anymore. Mark, I've only, I, this came kind of out of the blue to me. So let me check with the harbor authority people and see if they wish to pursue any part of this, but.
Dunk a dough. I mean.
I can't hear you.
Get the $2,000 bucks. So if it's something that can be done to benefit the communities, might as well spend it, but it's there for.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question along those lines. For Dr. Shookman specifically, because this started last summer, right? So the, the core samples that they took are, in my opinion, old data now and probably need to be redone, given that the water continued to rise and we had a great deal of sediment come down the river, as is evidenced by our little islands out here. So my question to this group would be, at what point is this type of data old and need to be redone?
Well, that's a question we need to put through Mr. Shookman. We can do that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comment on that one? Excuse me. Next communication was one from Judy Anthro regarding the zebra ban show. Any comment on that? Then the last one was the, not the last one, but the next one was Bloom Sluggett's letter regarding Lake Michigan frontage obstacles. Barry?
I have comments on that. I'll save for council comments.
Okay. And lastly is Kirk Harrier's letter of resignation, which we received. And I have many sadness with regard to that. I think Kirk, you've served our city well for a long period of time and I appreciated working with you. And while we have a few more weeks to, to work together, I just want to say that I valued that. I'm sorry to see you go. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Barry?
I would echo your comments. Kirk and I have worked together for 14 and a half years and he made me a better councilman. And he's been a great asset to our community. And my first impression upon hearing of that, I was very happy for him because he's indicated he's got a new direction and I value him as a friend and support him as he moves forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
I echo that. Kirk always had the answers to everything. I always felt that nothing fell through the cracks. And if he didn't know it, he found out within 24 hours, usually about two o'clock in the morning. So I consider him a friend and I'll miss him greatly. It made me very, very sad.
Jane?
Yeah, the City of Sagatuck has lost a huge asset. Kirk worked endlessly for our community. He worked all night. People used to complain because he didn't come in till 9:30 in the morning, but they never complained that he didn't leave until seven or eight o'clock at night. I never heard one complaint about that. So I want to thank Kirk for all he did for Sagatuck and all he gave up for Sagatuck. He was a fine, fine leader.
Ken?
Yes, Mark?
I'll have to just echo what everybody said. Kirk left some big, big footprints. Historically speaking, in the City of Sagatuck, things that were accomplished under his leadership and watch. Well, they're going to be around a lot longer than we are. I mean, there are things that'll be around for, for an immeasurable amount of time. So Kirk, I just want to say it was a real pleasure working with you and wish you only the best, you and your wife going forward. Thank you.
Well, Kirk, I certainly agree with everything that's been said. We're going to miss you. Let's move to the board commission, the committee reports. One that's on the list is the ad hoc tri-community recycling committee. Garnet or Barry?
Garnet's the boss.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. As many folks know, the recycling surveys went out last week. The survey to business owners was dropped Tuesday, September the 8th. And the survey to residents was dropped September the 9th, Wednesday, September the 9th. We'll send out reminders at the end of next week and then we'll start, we'll close it probably the week after that. So we'll be pushing folks and reminding folks to get these surveys. And Rhonda's been great. She's, she has a, she's an artist and has put together some really nice renderings to try to encourage people to respond. So anything that you all can do, whether you're on council or listening in, I think we still have 40 some folks listening in right now. So anything you can do to respond and or encourage others to respond, that's greatly appreciated. And the committee's been great. Great group to work with.
Good. Thank you. Barry?
Yes. Great report, Garnet. Good progress. I did make a promise to somebody that contacted us. In fact, had a couple of people contact us that are concerned about the blue recycling bins and them not being big enough. And I know I, they're not big enough for me. And through that discussion, particularly with one gentleman, the answer is Kirk told us as well, is that if you have more recycling than one bin, you need to rent a second because we can't increase two pickups a month and everybody pays and everybody doesn't necessarily need a second bin. So in my case, I'm going to have to get a second bin. And if I get caught up, maybe I'll, you know, cancel it. But I appreciate one of our Sagatuck citizens raising their experience and helped me get some answers.
Okay. Jane?
I have a question. Um, is there a list someplace of what can be recycled and what can't be recycled? It's my understanding that it's come up that you can't recycle glass anymore and that water bottles that can be wadded up only get in the machinery. Plastic grocery bags can't be recycled. I'm just wondering if there's a list someplace that you can refer to. I know we talked like a year ago about making a list to paste inside the cover of people's garbage cans so they know what actually goes into a recycle can. And then my other question is, how many of our pickups actually get recycled? Or are they so contaminated with things that can't be recycled that they just go to the dump? So, or to a landfill? So I'm kind of interested about those things.
Okay. Barry or Garnet?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I, I can certainly provide to all of council again, a copy of the Zoom meeting, the Zoom recording where the gentleman from Republic Services spent a lot of time talking to us about all of those issues. And the goal of the committee is to be able to place on every container that which can and cannot be recycled. But at the moment, the only thing that's being recycled is cardboard. That's it. That's it. So I'll get you guys the recording so you can listen in yourself. It was very informative and well worth your time.
Yeah. Jane?
So all that other stuff we put in a recycle can is not being recycled? What, I don't, I'm, now I'm really surprised. So we should just be putting cardboard in our recycle cans? And is cardboard that's been printed on, is that acceptable to be recycled?
Just cardboard. Yep. I'll send you a copy of that recording.
Yeah, Garnet, I believe that on the Republic site, there's also a link that gives a, an explanation of this and we should make that available too.
Yep.
Okay. Are there, are there any other commissions or committees to report? Mark, do you have a?
Nothing. Our next Cal Lake meeting is a week from today.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. And we'll go to council comments. Let's see, Holly?
No comments.
All righty. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with your request to restart the Blue Star Trail Committee. It's too bad we, it dropped off, but it's still in people's minds. So thank you for that. And my other quick item is referring to item 16C, which is a communication from our attorney, which her sequestered counsel in response to her letters and comments from Sagatuck citizens. I share their concerns about safe beach access by our citizens and the public. I also think it would have an effect on the tourist economy, being part of the benefit of having Oval Beach Park and Stockton Harbor Natural Area. So I'm asking the council for agreement to authorize the city attorney to draft a letter for review at the next workshop. And that letter would be from the mayor to the administrative law judge, who will decide to conduct a hearing or not on the construction permits related to the obstruction of safe lake shore passage and instruct the director of the Michigan Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Agents Agency to make the final decision. So I'm looking for support to have that letter ready for us to look at at the next workshop for potential action at the next regular meeting.
All right. Well, as you know, at this point, I don't think we can take a formal action on that, but council members could express their opinions as to whether they would support that or not.
Yeah, I'm not looking for a vote. I'm just, this is kind of how we get the ball rolling on these things, if we kind of all agree to take a look at that at the next workshop.
Okay. Thanks. Any other comments, Barry?
No, thank you.
Okay. Garnet?
Just a quick question. I know we talked about this at the workshop on Thursday. Am I right to assume that we'll be getting an update on what's happening with the pop-up patios for later in the fall? Is that correct? I think Jane and Chris.
There's a meeting on Wednesday.
Great, thanks. So I think Jane and Chris and his guy, Darazano, helping with that as well from uncommon grounds?
And Christine.
Great. Thank you.
And Cindy. We've already...
Wonderful. Yep, just wanted to make sure everybody on the call knew. Thank you.
All right. Chris?
Yes, just to follow up on what Garnet said, we are meeting with Guy and Christine and Cindy and Jane and I to look at the pop-ups. I've been calling all around, trying to find out how to handle the snow removal issue. Ottawa, apparently in Canada, has the best package, and so I'm scheduled to talk to them next week. Also, we are doing the, looking into the Christmas lighting. I'm pulling together as many of the old group, as well as I have several people that have asked to be on it. I have a meeting with Chip from, with Nick from Chip's Ground Cover, and then we have a larger meeting to go over options yet this week. So we're going to move fast on this and get something rolled back to the council as soon as we can. And the last thing is, I don't know if you noticed today downtown, but Sean Steele removed the historical fishing, fishing shanty. Took about an hour. They lifted it up, they put it on a flatbed, and out it went, and they did not have to demolish it. It was amazing to watch. So thanks, Sean.
Mark?
Yes, thanks, Ken. I'm a little confused of what action we're really going to take relative to the letter regarding the shoreline that Barry just referenced. Barry, are you looking for something to come to the council at the next workshop for potential action?
Well, yes. Again, I'm just asking the council, and I'm not sure even has to go to the lawyer, maybe it's just the way I stated it, and I can print that out and send it out, but just a letter from the mayor, which the council would approve, to request that the administrative law judge give it a hearing. And then let the director of the Eagle make the determination, because it isn't for sure that he'll even review it, and I think we would like to have the permits reviewed.
I don't have a problem with supporting such an action. What my concern is referencing back to Cliff Bloom's letter that states it's not clear whether, whether we as a city have a standing to, to file a letter of resolution of support. So as long as that's part of the process, I know we're, you know, running up with some additional attorney fees, but I mean, if we're going to be making a resolution or sending a letter of support, we ought to at least know if we have the proper legal standing before we move on.
Yeah, Mark, I, I think that Cliff Bloom addressed that, because in his letter, he gave that as one of the options, as a letter or a resolution, and I'm even backing it off just to a letter, and that is part of his legal advice, and so that is just a letter requesting that the administrative law judge.
Let's not do it. Letter buried, my friend.
You know, so...
I'm, I'm looking on, I'm looking at the letter right here that's in our packet.
Yeah, it's, it's buried kind of in there. I'd have to get to it myself, and I can read it to you, so.
So I, I guess obviously, if we're looking for the attorney for some type of direction in a potential letter, he's absolutely not going to issue something to us that we don't legally have a basis to huddle up on, so I guess I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, well...
I just want to bring that up, you know, that I'm going to want to know, because and maybe there's some inconsistent wording in Cliff's letter, but anyways, I don't want to beat this up. I just, I don't know, if we're going to act on something, we've got the legal standing to do so.
Well, that, if this is just a request, it's not, we're not taking a legal stand. We're just requesting them to look at it, and it's just one line in his letter where he references a letter or a resolution, and then he gets onto the other more things. The judge will decide if we have legal standing, he may just throw our letter out, but at least it gives us some kind of stake in the sand where we're concerned about those rocks.
Well, let's just see how it, well, you know, comes together.
Well, this isn't the point of the meeting to debate that point, I think, so.
You're right.
Let's move on. So Jane?
I have no comments.
All right. I think I covered everybody, right? The, the pictures danced around on me. I just want to make sure I covered everybody for comments. Then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by Verplank?
Second.
Yes.
It's a, it's a roll call vote. Aaron, please?
Yes, Verplank?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we are adjourned.